Good evening and welcome to the meeting of the Newport News City Council for December the 10th. We ask that if you're here to speak before the council tonight, that you fill out a card located in the foyer. Please list the item to which you wish to address. If the item you wish to address is not on the agenda, we ask that you mark Item I, which are matters germane to the city council. We have a light system on the podium. After you give your name and address, the green light will come on. At the end of two minutes, the yellow, and at the end of three minutes, the red. We ask at that time you take your seat. The city code identifies the procedure for citizen participation regarding items on tonight's council agenda and provides the opportunity for citizens to address city council on matters that are germane to the business of council. Matters that are germane to the business of council means matters that the city council, by law, is empowered to act upon. This does not include announcements that are personal to you, your business, or your organization, including campaign information. Copies of the city ordinance regarding citizen participation can be found at the desk in the lobby. If you intend to address council this evening, please pick up and review a copy of that ordinance. We also ask at this time if you would silence your phones. As usual, we will have an invocation and pledge of allegiance. We invite Pastor Matt Hoover from Waters Edge Church to deliver an invocation to the city council. Afterwards, Councilwoman Cherry will lead us in the pledge. For both, will you please stand?
Mayor, council, thank you for the opportunity. Citizens, thank you guys for joining us for today's meeting. Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance and your wisdom as we begin this meeting. Help each person in this great council engage in meaningful discussion. Help them to work towards unity and a shared future. As each of us, as public servants, seek to better serve our community, give us your perspective in your heart. Fill this room with your grace as members of this team make decisions that will affect a wide variety of people. Fill them with both empathy and authority as they lead our community to a place of abundance and prosperity. Remind us today that all we do, all we accomplish, and all we move forward is for the service of the amazing, hardworking, and ambitious people of Newport News. We ask all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please show me with the flash of the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to excuse Councilwoman Scott from this meeting?
So moved.
Moved in second. Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Cherry?
Four.
Councilwoman Harris?
Four.
Councilwoman Jenkins?
Four.
Mayor Price?
Four.
Vice Mayor Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Motion carry, six zero.
I would also entertain a motion at this time to suspend the rules and change the speaking time to one minute under Section 2-61 of the code.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Call the roll.
Councilwoman Cherry?
Four.
Councilwoman Harris?
Four.
Councilwoman Jenkins?
Four.
Mayor Price?
Four.
Vice Mayor Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Motion carry, six zero.
Okay, we are now at public hearings, page four. Item E1 is a request to adopt an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a deed of easement by and between the City of Newport News, Virginia and Virginia Electric Power Company, doing business as Dominion Energy Virginia, for an easement across city-owned property located at 524 J. Clyde Morris Boulevard. City council received an open bid for this easement at its November 26 meeting, regular meeting. Dominion Energy Virginia was the successful bidder in that process with a bid of $1. The proposed utility easement will enable Dominion Energy Virginia to run underground cable along the road that goes through Deer Park for better accessibility. The underground service will be used to service the ballpark facilities that are currently being fed from poles. The city manager recommends approval. Are there any cards?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Cherry?
Four.
Councilwoman Harris?
Four.
Councilwoman Jenkins?
Four.
Mayor Price?
Four.
Vice Mayor Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Motion carry, six zero.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Move adoption.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Cherry?
Four.
Councilwoman Harris?
Four.
Councilwoman Jenkins?
Four.
Mayor Price?
Four.
Vice Mayor Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Motion carry, six zero.
Page 17. Item E2 is a request to adopt an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a deed of easement by and between the City of Newport News, Virginia and Virginia Electric Power Company, doing business as Dominion Energy Virginia, for an easement across city-owned property located at 1510 Gatewood Road. City council received an open bid for this easement at its November 26 regular meeting. Dominion Energy Virginia was the successful bidder in that process with a bid of $1. The proposed utility easement will enable Dominion Energy Virginia to work its strategic underground project. The scope of the project calls for placing Dominion's electrical lines underground in order to improve reliability of service to the area. The city manager recommends approval. Are there any cards?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Cherry?
Four.
Councilwoman Harris?
Four.
Councilwoman Jenkins?
Four.
Mayor Price?
Four.
Vice Mayor Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Motion carry, six zero.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Cherry?
Four.
Councilwoman Harris?
Four.
Councilwoman Jenkins?
Four.
Mayor Price?
Four.
Vice Mayor Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Motion carry, six zero.
Page 28. Item E3 is a request to adopt an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute any and all documents, including deeds necessary, to effectuate the conveyance of city-owned property located at 646 Hampton Avenue to the Newport News Redevelopment and Housing Authority. Once conveyed to the Newport News Redevelopment and Housing Authority, has agreed to transfer the property to Habitat for Humanity Peninsula and Greater Williamsburg. Habitat for Humanity intends to build a Habitat home on the site beginning the spring of 2020. This site will be one of six Habitat homes built in close proximity to each other within the boundaries of the Choice Neighborhood Initiative. The city manager recommends approval. Are there any cards?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Cherry?
Four.
Councilwoman Harris?
Four.
Councilwoman Jenkins?
Four.
Mayor Price?
Four.
Vice Mayor Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Motion carry, six zero.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Move adoption.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
I just have one question and I think I just want to be clear. So for this particular piece of property, does anyone know what the lot size is for that piece of property?
Fifty by one hundred.
Fifty by one hundred. Okay, thank you.
Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Cherry?
Four.
Councilwoman Harris?
Four.
Councilwoman Jenkins?
Four.
Mayor Price?
Four.
Vice Mayor Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Motion carry, six zero.
Item F contains the following items: Page 31, minutes of the work session of November 26; Page 43, minutes of the regular meeting; Page 73. A request to adopt an ordinance authorizing compensation for the members of the board to review of real estate assessments for the September through November 2019 term of service. Do any of these items need to be removed by council? If not, a motion to approve consent agenda F1 through F3, all-inclusive, is in order.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Cherry?
Four.
Councilwoman Harris?
Four.
Councilwoman Jenkins?
Four.
Mayor Price?
Four.
Vice Mayor Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Motion carry, six zero.
Page 75. Item G1, matter manager.
Yes. First item is a request to city council to receive an open bids for a non-exclusive franchise agreement to locate, co-locate, construct, operate, and maintain small cell facilities in rights-of-way owned by the City of Newport News, Virginia. And we recommend any bids be referred to staff.
Okay, questions on that? Okay.
Who's it from? Under Virginia law, we don't charge for franchises anymore. They pay a right-of-way fee to the state. So, and it was only Verizon?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you. Next one.
Page 114. Item G2, matter manager.
This is a request to adopt an ordinance amending and reordaining City Code, Chapter 22, Library System, Article 1, in general, to add Section 22-8, the Newport News Public Library System Foundation. And I recommend approval.
Are there any cards?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Cherry?
Four.
Councilwoman Harris?
Four.
Councilwoman Jenkins?
Four.
Mayor Price?
Four.
Vice Mayor Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Motion carry, six zero.
Page 117. Item G3, matter manager.
Yes, this is a request to approve a resolution authorizing and directing the city manager to execute the Independence Boulevard and Best Management Practices, BMP, agreement by and between the City of Newport News, Virginia and Huntington Point LLC, and I recommend approval.
Are there any cards?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Cherry?
Four.
Councilwoman Harris?
Four.
Councilwoman Jenkins?
Four.
Mayor Price?
Four.
Vice Mayor Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Cherry, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Motion carry, six zero.
Okay, page 183. Item H, matter manager.
Yes, we have three appropriations. The first is a request to approve a resolution appropriating $5 million from the Newport News Waterworks Department bond funds cash to automated meter reading.
Is there a more? Oh, I'm sorry, there's more.
The second item is a request to approve a resolution appropriating the reallocation of $445,941 in Newport News Public School Division's FY 2018 capital projects appropriation to the Lee Hall Elementary Roof Replacement Project. And the last item is a request to approve a resolution appropriating $910,000 from the FY 2020 bond authorization in the public buildings category for the jail kitchen renovation project, and I recommend approval of all three appropriations.
Okay, is there a motion to approve Item H1 through H3, all-inclusive?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Cherry?
Four.
Councilwoman Harris?
Four.
Councilwoman Jenkins?
Four.
Mayor Price?
Four.
Vice Mayor Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Motion carry, six zero.
Okay, we are now at citizen comments on matters germane to the business of council. I will present the cards as presented to me. I hope you understand that because of the volume, there was a change in rules. Tonight, you will have one minute. Paul Herring.
My name is Paul Herring, and first, I'd like to say that I'm very disappointed with your decision to limit us to only one minute for such an important topic. I'm a United States citizen, a Virginian, and a homeowner and resident of Newport News. Tonight, I wish to speak on an issue that is weighing high on the minds of Virginians, proposed gun laws, specifically SB 16, have been filed and will be voted on as early as January by our legislation. These gun laws and proposed bills are unconstitutional. They will do absolutely nothing to affect, to decrease criminal activity and gun violence. All they will do is make millions of Virginians felons overnight by the restriction of magazines that contain more than 10 rounds of ammunition. All across the state of Virginia, Virginians are rising up to protect our constitutional rights to bear arms. And many of these localities and counties in Virginia have declared themselves a sanctuary city. I am asking the council tonight to put a vote on the floor to make Newport News a sanctuary city. I'm asking our delegate, our representative, Shelley Simpson, to go up to Virginia and to vote no enrichment on the proposed ban SB 16.
Thank you, sir. Jared Vass.
My name is Jared Vass. I live in Demby District. I've grown up in Demby. Thirty-seven years I've been in Newport News. Went to Demby High School with probably one of our other people on the board. Tonight, I came about two items. It's youth programs in the community and also now the Second Amendment. That was our second topic. City has done nothing for youth programs, football, wrestling, baseball. It's all gone private because the city is not doing anything. We would rather rent our fields and do that stuff. Now, with the new laws coming into effect, well, what's going to be voted on for Second Amendment, what else do I have to do with my child? I own property in York County. I take them hunting. If we allow this kind of stuff in this city, granted, we don't hunt in this city, but I have children. I have four boys. What else do I have to do with my children with living in Newport News? And truthfully, I hope that you all will put a motion on the floor to put this on the agenda for the next meeting. I know it takes time. At least give it two weeks. Look into this and see where we can go with this.
Thank you, sir. Dan Grace.
Hey, folks doing. My name's Dan Gross. I'm a resident of Newport News for 38 years. Just wanted to point out a few quick facts. 2018 has 43 homicides in the city, 28 unsolved. None were committed by law-abiding citizens. So we've got 340 gun laws at the federal level, 20,000 gun laws at the state level, all of which criminals ignore on a daily basis. Sometimes citizens run afoul of these laws and end up in jail. Kind of what we wanted to point out was, if you've ever watched any Netflix documentary where someone's being incarcerated unjustly and it made you feel helpless and sick to your stomach, imagine having your Fifth and 14th Amendment rights stripped away where the only court is a court of public opinion. And this is referring to red flag laws, where public opinion causes politicians to bend, you know, to public opinion rather than based on statistics. And since 1994, the gun ban, Americans have added 120 million guns to their arsenal. And yet, in the United States, crime continues to go down. Right? If we had a gun problem, we would know. And I just wanted to, you know...
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Adrianne Whitcomb.
I just want to make a point that HRSD had their first open house this past Saturday, and there was a large crowd that came out. But there'll be another one, January the 9th. That will be on the Thursday from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM. So we have this information on our website at savereviewfarmpark.com. And it's a good idea to educate yourself on this issue and to see what they are proposing and how that might fit in with the park. But let's make a point to, and also, I want to say that the video that I took of the presentation to council is, of course, on our website, too. So those who haven't seen that, that's a good idea for you to see it. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you, sir. Robert Gurley Jr.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Counsel, Santa Jenkins, thank you for the cookies. I would like to just start off by saying I've been a resident of Newport News my entire life. I now live in the home that has belonged to my family for over 35 years. The fifth child of that house, my parents are waiting for me to get married and move out like the rest of my brothers and sisters. Why is that important? Couple months ago, as I was standing in my garage, I had the occasion to hear several gunshots coming no more than 60 feet away from my back door. Later that morning, I discovered that those were generated from two people who decided to deprive a man of his vehicle. The man was not armed. 60 feet from my house, this man was not armed. He had no way to defend himself. He actually complied with every order that he was given by these two individuals, who later ordered him to lie down face-down and then still fired several bullets, one of them striking him in the buttocks and the other striking him in the arm. And they later took his car halfway down the street and burned it. Why is this important to me? Because this happened near my home. Adding to what the previous gentleman said, again, these things do not make me afraid. What makes me afraid are the laws that are being proposed right now and that are coming down from Richmond. That makes me fear. I've been a law enforcement officer. I've served for about eight years. And again, those things do not make me afraid, more afraid than what is coming down from Richmond. We, as a city, need to have a right as citizens, which we do, guaranteed by our Constitution and by the Constitution of Virginians. Thank you.
Noah Cecil.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
So, speaking to you now as an aspiring police officer, what is a police officer supposed to do? Preserve life. Funny thing is, the most effective tool to preserve life is the same gun, same rifle, that our governor is trying to take away. Yet, our governor is still protected by those same weapons, is he not? It's funny that police officers in Secret Service carry the firearm because it's the most effective tool to preserve life. Now, the Sixth Commandment in the Bible is, "You shall not murder." Each command has a do and a don't. But what's funny about the Sixth is that the do is that you must preserve life. How? By the most effective tools necessary. I leave you with this. Freedom is never more than one generation away from extinction. We didn't pass it on or pass it to our children in the bloodstream. It must be fought for, protected, and handed on from them to do the same. Ronald Reagan. The only reason the governor is able to attempt the stripping of rights is because he is standing on the foundation of patriots that were exercising the Second Amendment before it was even written.
Thank you, sir. Lane Dior.
I've been a resident of Newport News for roughly about two and a half years. My first two weeks living here, I had somebody break into my house. I stood that robber down with a semi-automatic rifle, one that would be banned under these new laws. It was, I stood him down, and there was no loss of life. I had no issue. I never had issues with my house again since that point. I, every morning, I put my uniform on, and I go out and I serve my country to defend America and all our rights and our Constitution. I've done two deployments overseas to defend that. For what I'm seeing now is a strip of my right. I'm asking you if you could help defend my rights here in the City of Newport News. I'll leave you with, I quote from 1861, "The framers of our Constitution never exhausted so much label, wisdom, or forbearance in its formation, and surrounded with so many gods and securities." The problem, the mayor now is going around those gods and securities and taking away what defines us as Americans and what defines us in all ways to defend ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening.
Would you bring the mic down? Yes, thank you.
I will bring the mic down. Thank you. Thank you. I'm glad to be here this evening. I bring a different perspective on the Second Amendment sanctuary question that appears to be on the minds of most of the people here today. I am in opposition to the city taking a position on the Second Amendment sanctuary proposal. I appreciate the concern and, as evidenced by some of the comments here, the fear many have with the upcoming changes that will occur in the Virginia General Assembly in 2020 as a result of elections held in November 2019. As a former Newport News council member back in the 80s and as a former high school government teacher, I value the federal system created by the U.S. Constitution, of which the Second Amendment is one aspect. Our federal system allows U.S. localities and states to experiment with responses to address our problems and needs. The Second Amendment sanctuary movement, I feel, would stop that experimentation here in Virginia and I believe could cause great harm to the greater welfare of our people.
Thank you, ma'am.
That's it. Thank you.
Craig Knapp.
Good evening. Good afternoon, members of city council. My name is Craig Knapp, and I'm here to ask your support in having Newport News follow suit with many other localities to become a Second Amendment sanctuary city. Virginia is a Dillon Law State, which allows its localities the authority to enforce or not enforce state law. Earlier this year, two Hampton Roads locations, Norfolk and Portsmouth, had already paved the way for sanctuary cities by not enforcing marijuana possession. In a letter addressed to Norfolk City Council officials on January 3, 2019, Norfolk's Commonwealth attorney, Gregory Underwood, said that Norfolk will no longer prosecute misdemeanor charges of marijuana possession. In a similar letter addressed to Portsmouth city officials on April 8, 2019, Portsmouth's Commonwealth attorney, Stephanie Morales, said Portsmouth will not prosecute any marijuana possessing charges. Currently, under Virginia law 18.2-250, it is illegal to possess marijuana without a doctor's approval, and it is a prosecutable offense. With my closing statement, I would like to ask that city council bring forth a Second Amendment sanctuary vote and for the city council to vote yes on this agenda.
Thank you, sir.
Try and make this as short as I can, city council. I'm here today not only asking to name Newport News a Second Amendment sanctuary city, but for you to give the city time. What I mean by this is I am suggesting giving the City of Newport News time for the Supreme Court to rule on both the New York City gun rights case and the Warman versus Healy case. These two cases can be ruled in favor of the Second Amendment, and if the current bill is filed in Richmond, are passed and enforced, millions of individuals, families, friends, and even businesses will have gone through a costly legal process that could have been avoided by simply saying, "Wait." The amount of time and money that would have been saved by simply telling Richmond, "We should wait on this before moving forward," is unimaginable. This would include time and money lost to the aforementioned. This would also include time, money, manpower, and resources wasted by the state and localities of the Commonwealth of Virginia. This presents a hard-right decision. So in closing, I ask all of you to think back to November 2015, when another firearm issue was presented to this same council. There were arguments made on both sides due to what each felt was right. In the end, the hard-right choice was made. I ask you to decide on this issue, as you did back then, by listening to what the people here tonight need to say, understanding where those people are coming from, and then making the hard-right decision. Thank you for your time allowing me to speak.
Good evening.
Good evening, everybody. I'm trying to be real quick about it. This is a copy for the council. I'm trying to get through my notes real quick, because we reduced it. Navy veteran, American Legion member. I've met a lot of you guys multiple times, and I have felt like you guys are really awesome. But after seeing a Facebook post about a couple weeks ago, I was really concerned, and I started digging into the reasons why a lot of this stuff is going on. And I know after the Virginia Beach shootings, there was a lot of things that were knee-jerk reactions with a lot of communities. And I felt like there was a proposal from Mr. Mayor Price regarding a resolution for gun control then on June 11th, that was in closed-door session, I guess. And then it was brought up for June 25th agenda, where everybody voted yes to it, without actually knowing what the details were about what was coming. And obviously, if... And there was no community involvement, no community feedback on it during that June 25th meeting, which, as you can see right here, there was a lot of people that have concerns with this. And if they would have had a heads-up about this for that meeting, they would have definitely been here to voice their opinions and concerns, and probably revoke what was voted in. So I'm asking, in future, if there's any other things like this that come up, that please, there has to be some way of letting the community know about it, so that they can come in and voice their opinions.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Paul... I think this is... Modar. I can't read this. Paul. And John Axum will be next. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Council. Thank you for allowing me to speak here this evening. I'd like to point out a couple of different things. We all pledge to liberty and justice. However, our state government is now restricting that liberty from each and every one of us. If these proposed laws go through, our liberty will be taken away. A lot of people will say, "Well, you know, this is for the public safety." Let me give you some statistics on the public safety. On average, there are 19 deaths per year since 2002 by mass shootings. Last year, there were 609 deaths from cancer, 630,000 deaths from heart disease, 1.2 million deaths from car crashes. It's not about that. We all know this. It's about taking away our liberty, taking away our rights, taking away what God has given us, and that the Constitution has guaranteed us through our forefathers. I'll leave you with a quote from Thomas Jefferson. "What country can preserve its liberties if their rulers are not warned from time to time that their people preserve the spirit of resistance?"
Thank you, sir.
I'd like to take this first moment to state that I totally and completely support the city of Newport News being named a sanctuary city for our constitutional Second Amendment rights, and I am ashamed that I have to ask for that. The attack against our country's, our Commonwealth's, and our city's heritage and fundamental rights is disgraceful and should be met with reason. It should also be met with resistance, and if need be... And if need be, it should be met with civil disobedience, which hopefully, God willing, it will not need. I'd like to take this moment just to remind the council members, and I do this with all due respect, of your oath of office. You all solemnly swore or affirmed that you would support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia, and that you would faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties upon which you were elected to uphold. Now, some people who haven't had a basic civics lesson in the last few years may have forgotten that there's an Article 6 to the Constitution called the Supremacy Clause. And in the Supremacy Clause, the Constitution of the United States is supreme law of the land. Therefore, Mayor Bloomberg's attempt to subvert Virginia's laws is actually unconstitutional. I thereby ask that the council please move to have a formal vote put on the next meeting's agenda, and thank you for your time.
Ronald Pike. David Wilson will be next.
Make it quick.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor Price, Vice Mayor Vick, and honorable council members. My name's Ronald Pike. I want to thank you for your time and your dedication, and I want to thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of the Second Amendment sanctuary city issue and the unconstitutional and tyrannical laws that are about to be passed in Richmond. I've held a top-secret security clearance for 30 years. I'm also a competitive shooter and have won four national championships in speed shooting and action shooting with the same weapons that they are going to vilify me with. What the politicians in Richmond are proposing may make not only myself, but virtually everyone in this meeting, including yourselves, if you own a firearm that has the capacity, and I say this again, the capacity to hold more than 10 rounds, an instant Class V felon or Class VI felon. These laws are so ridiculous that anyone who merely teaches a person firearms training can be thrown in jail and have a felony on their record. I've been told by the politicians in Richmond that this is only the beginning. Senate Bill 64 and Senate Bill 16 will definitely make me a felon, as well as over 99% of the 2.4 million legal firearms owners in the state. Many people living in Newport News work at the shipyard and have security clearances.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, City Council members. My name is David Wilson. I mentor several children in the Newport News area. I was raised and brought up on the fact that if you do wrong, you get told wrong, and people don't protect you when you're doing wrong. We have a City Council member who called the children of Newport News a bug. And my question to you all is, what are you going to do about it, instead of vilifying me? I'm not the problem. I'm not the enemy. If a City Council member calls children bugs, then that's a person who does not deserve to be sitting on a City Council. If you all support this, then what you are supporting is saying that children deserve to be called bugs, when we're out here trying to teach them different ways in life to keep them from killing each other and to decrease the murder rate that's going on in this... Because these children feel like they don't have a purpose, and if somebody's going to call them a bug, then they no longer will feel like they have a purpose or strive for anything other than that. My question to you all is, how do you feel about the children of Newport News, and do you feel that they are bugs? Thank you.
Joshua... Joshua Fawcett. I can't see this. I'm sorry.
Good evening. I'm Josh Fawcett. I live at 98 Graham Road. I own Diamond and Sons Custom Paintings, small business based here in Newport News, and employ seven people. I'm here tonight about the gun thing. I'd like Newport News to be a Second Amendment sanctuary, to fight against these new laws. I'm not really a conservative or a progressive. I'm not really even a big gun person. But, I mean, they're going to target people in poor neighborhoods. It's what they usually do with these things. They did it on the war on drugs, and they're going to do it to... It's going to be a victimless crime kind of thing. So, I mean, I don't want to see Newport News become that. You know what I'm saying? So, thank you.
Doug Peterson.
Good evening. My name is Doug Peterson. I've been a resident of Newport News for 45 years. I live in Denny. Many of the points I was going to make have already been addressed, but let me clarify a couple of things here. SB 16, which includes a rewrite of one of the gun statutes defining assault firearms, will literally make felons out of half of your police force. There are no exceptions for that in that rule for anybody to have one of these firearms, period. I hope you're prepared to deal with that, but the best way to deal with it is stop that bill from being implemented. And we don't want an exception just for law enforcement. We want the whole thing to disappear, because there's no reason that there should be a penalty like that for owning a semi-automatic firearm. One of the most ergonomic ones has ever been built. Easy to shoot, easy to control, very difficult to make a mistake with it. People are the problem here that want to go out and commit crimes, not the law-abiding citizens who own these firearms. If there were, there would be a whole lot worse situation with crime than there is now. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Uganda Sample Jones. Peace and blessings. I understand that serving many different types of diverse personalities and agendas and ideas can be a beautiful, but also a challenging thing. So I want to thank you for your service. It seems like time has flown by in nowhere in December, and I look at this as a time of reflection. And that is why I want to thank you so much for your leadership, because as I reflect over the past year, I myself have learned valuable lessons as far as looking into the positivity in every situation. And that's why I'm thankful for the hard work and resiliency that went into the Choice Neighborhood Initiative, and the forward-thinking and the collaboration in producing the Brooks Crossing Innovation Lab. But I also ponder over things like, why is the liquor store open until 10 o'clock, but the lab closes at 5:00? These are things that our children need. Our children need us to look outside the box. I thank Chief Drew for coming and showing us what community policing looks like. But unfortunately for my family, we experienced death. My 15-year-old nephew is gone, and I think about him constantly. So as I reflect over the past year, my heart aches, but I'm grateful and I'm hopeful that I also am thankful for your hard work and your tenacity. And I look forward for the opportunity to truly work together and collaborate.
Thank you so much. Keith Hancock. Heather Klein will follow Keith Hancock.
Would it be okay for the guy next after me to go over?
Absolutely, sir. Thank you. Heather Klein. And Ms. Hancock will be next. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me the time to speak today. So I am, as many of the other people here, also a resident of Newport News. And I understand there's a lot of debate to be had about specific gun regulations. However, I do not think that it is the correct choice to throw all gun regulations out the window by making Newport News a sanctuary city. So I'm opposed to that idea. Firearms are the first leading cause of death for children and teens in the United States. This is according to the EveryTownResearch.org website, which collates information from several reputable sources. I would also like to talk, considering the small amount of time here, I'm skipping over a lot. I also want to address the fact that 60%, in fact, 67% of gun deaths are suicides. Many people believe that suicide is something that is inevitable. If someone chooses to do that, you can't stop them. But that's not true. There's a lot of evidence that if you prevent someone from attempting it, they won't try it again. If anyone needs this information, a suicide hotline is 1-800-273-TALK.
I'm sorry for the delay.
No problem, sir. Good evening.
Thank you. My name is Keith Hancock. I've been a resident of this city since I retired from the Navy in 2000. You're going to hear from a lot of people tonight about various reasons why they believe that we should become a sanctuary city. I was going to speak more on various topics, including the grammar of the Constitution, which makes the statement actually say what it says, vice what a lot of people think it says, the history of the militias, and why this constitutional amendment was created in the first place and makes it pertinent still today. However, due to your time limit, I would like to start off, if I may, by asking everybody in the House, how many people here read the rules that are in place for being able to make a statement and framed your statements around the three minutes? By you changing the rules like this, you've gone ahead and effectively silenced the voices of the citizens that would like to speak. Is my time, please? The next thing I would like to do is just ask that you put it on the agenda for discussion, and when we discuss, afford people the full time allowed. If it's too inconvenient to you to listen to everybody, let us know. We'll take care of that for you.
Good evening. I've come to realize there is nothing new. Our future is set by those that came before us. The time is always right to do what is right. Martin Luther King, 1965. Other quotes from Martin Luther King. "The ultimate measure of a man is not where he stands in moments of comfort and confidence and convenience," but where he stands at times of challenge and controversy. "Injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere." We are caught in our escapable network of mutuality tied in a single garment of destiny. Whatever affects one directly affects all. Please consider funding a full amount for Huntington Middle School as soon as possible, the $50 million that the city... the school board is asking for. Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening. Trying to keep from stepping on the dog's foot over there. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and members of council, and Madam City Manager. I'd like to wish all of you some happy holidays, and I want to ask you, as you reflect on the holidays and reflect on gift-giving, that you consider gift-giving Huntington Middle School funds immediately so that we can start the process of building. Our children can be returned to their neighborhood school, and they won't have to be crossing Mercury Boulevard on foot when they missed a school bus. So, again, happy holidays, and as always, Huntington Middle School shall
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. The greatest asset to a community is education. There's nothing more important. I understand about guns and the rights, all of that is pertinent and valuable in a community, but education is the key for our success. When I look at our city... When I look at our city council, because of education, you sit in front of us. It is so important that Huntington Middle School get its funding so that it can become a community attraction, so it can become the resource that created us. We went to Huntington High School, and lo and behold, here we are. Please, whatever it takes to get it done, fund Huntington Middle School so that this community, the southeast community, can become the beacon of hope for the citizens who dwell here. Thank you so much.
Colonel Dotson. Colonel Orin. Aaron, I'm sorry, Aaron Dotson, I believe. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here in support of the idea of having Huntington Middle School to be funded. This institution has been the bulwark of great education for us. I'm a graduate of Huntington High School, reared and born in Newport News, and I, when I look back, so many great leaders have come out of Huntington, which gave character and dignity and educational and leadership. We need that school to be funded so we can continue the legacy of the past. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Marcellus Harris. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, and all my friends from Newport News. I'm a native son, and got a son sitting on City Council. First thing I'm gonna do is be sure you give me a ride home. I had a bummer ride here, but you know I'm here for Huntington. I'm a Viking, bleed Viking blood, got Viking children. I'm a Viking in heart. My mama and my daddy graduated from Huntington, Dunbar. So I go a long way for it. Anything I can do to convince you, anything I can do to inspire you, anything I can do to help you make a decision to help Huntington will help me. I'm also a retired pastor. I'm enjoying that. I haven't been here in a long time. I didn't know I was walking through all of this. But just like my resume of old, I picked the right night.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. I'm here to ask that you put the Second Amendment...
Raise the mic some, please. Thank you.
The Second Amendment Sanctuary on the talking points for next time. I'd appreciate it. I, myself, I'm a firearms collector, and some of those laws would make myself a felon right away. There is fine print in a lot of these bills. One of them has fine print for a bayonet lug, which would make any firearm used in the Civil War or in the, well, really any war, illegal to own, whether it was one shot or ten. And I hope that you take that up and fund Huntington Middle School, because that's Because I think one of the problems is the disenfranchisement of the youth. I really do.
Aaron Parsons. I think he's coming from... Following him will be Jeff Branick. Jeff Branick, if you would, if you're here, come on first. Mr. Parsons, you'll be next.
Good evening, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen. I'm here in behalf of the Second Amendment too, and as a gentleman just before I said, I hope you would add that to the agenda for the next meeting. Throughout history, oppressive governments have tried to take the guns away from its citizens. During the Revolutionary War, prior to its starting, the British tried to take guns away from the colonists. When Adolf Hitler came to power, he took guns away from his citizens. When Stalin came to power, he took guns away from his citizens. And when Mao Zedong came to power, he took guns away from his citizens. Making a gun that carries ten shots or more a felon is going to make honest, law-abiding, American citizens, taxpaying citizens, legal citizens, felons. That's nothing more than communism, and we need to make sure that this law does not get put through. And everybody in this chamber who is here because of the Second Amendment needs to take the energy they have tonight and turn it into votes this fall.
Thank you, sir. Aaron Parsons.
Anybody...
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Aaron Parsons, and I am a former United States Army veteran. I have friends and family who have served in the United States Armed Forces. They have fought, they have died for the right for us to carry this, to carry firearms. I didn't come here tonight prepared to speak. I was just outside in the cold, and somebody came outside and asked if I'd like to. And it concerns me. You guys are elected officials, and I think you can see by the room tonight that the majority of the people here, the people who care about this, all wanna preserve this right. They want to allow us to keep these weapons for self-protection, for food, for hunting, and I really hope that the city council will make Newport News a sanctuary city to protect the rights that my friends, my family, has died for. Thank you.
Those are all the cards I have. We're now at new business, Madam Manager.
Nothing, sir.
Mr. Attorney. Madam Clerk.
Nothing, sir.
City Councilwoman Cherry.
I'd like to say happy holidays to all, and thank you, everyone, for coming tonight to speak. I really wanna thank all of you who have voiced your concerns and your reasons and your ideas concerning this Second Amendment sanctuary movement, and I do want you to know that we have not, as a council, had an opportunity to even have a discussion around it, because it's, for me, it's all new, and I really don't know much about it. So I thank you for coming and sharing tonight, and I do want you to know that I am interested in knowing more about Senate Bill sixteen and Senate Bill sixty-four, because I'm not even aware of what it entails or what it entails. So I'm not ready to take a position one way or the other, because I don't have enough information. So just know that I am open to hear. I am open to listen. Your voice does matter to me, but I would like to be informed before I try to make any decision about anything. I need more information so that I make sure that I'm clear on what it is that you're saying and not saying because of your passion, but saying because it's true information. So just know that that's where my position is for tonight, so I just want you to be aware of that. I wanna do a couple of thank yous. I wanna thank Mr. Smith and the Port, excuse me? I wanna thank Mr. Smith and the Port Option staff for their invitation for the Thanksgiving luncheon. It was really great to have lunch with the staff and with the students. I had an enjoyable time with them, and I really look forward to visiting again to work with them and their students. I wanna give a couple of congratulations. I wanna congratulate the Newport News Police Department for the promotions for sworn and non-sworn personnel. I just wanna say I'm very proud of all of them and just thank them for all the hard work that they do to help keep our community safe. I wanna encourage those of you who have an opportunity to attend, go to the Downing Girls Cultural Arts Center. I believe they have one more show on December the fourteenth. That's a production of Frozen Junior. I was able to see it last Saturday, and I tell you, we had an excellent demonstration of the gifts and talents of our youth and our children. That was so refreshing, and so those who say that there's nothing to do in the city of Newport News for youth and children, I encourage you to find out what's going on at the Downing Girls Cultural Arts Center, because there's a lot of things that happen there that's free for our children to participate in, and so especially acting, drama, art, music. And so I just encourage you, if you have not and you don't know much about the Downing Girls Cultural Arts Center, it is in the south part of the city, but it's a great place to be, and it's a great place that nurtures our children, so I just want you to be aware of that. I do want to know, you to know that, a couple announcements as well. The Newport News Police Department, we started the three-on-three, well, they started the three-on-three basketball league on last Saturday. I encourage you, you want to support our youth, this is another opportunity for our children to be involved. People say our children don't have anything to do. This is free to them to participate in the three-on-three basketball league with the police department. The games are held on Saturday mornings from ten to twelve at the Greater Peninsula Boys and Girls Club on Hampton Avenue. I wanna thank all of the parents who came out last Saturday. It was phenomenal to see the bleachers full with parents and children, so I encourage you to come out and support our children as well. I wanna thank Hal Smith, Angel Nelson, and the Police Department for this opportunity for our children to be engaged and to grow up with these opportunities. And this year, we have two girl basketball teams, and it was really funny to see them play on Saturday, with them screaming and hollering and holding their faces. It was really funny. So I just encourage you to come out as well to support that. I want to thank our Department of Parks Recreation and Special Events for our tree-lighting ceremony that we had last Saturday. If you don't know about it, there's another opportunity for our children and our families to be engaged. There are opportunities that are going on throughout the season, so I just wanna say thank you, thank you, Madam Manager, for that, and we had a great time. Thank you, Mayor, for Asa, for doing the countdown for us. He did an excellent job, even though we had a three-second pause before the tree came on, it was still very nice. So I encourage you to take your family out there. It is free for you to come out. Today, we had ribbon-cutting at Absolute...
Right Choice.
Right Choice with Pastor Anthony Cooper. Another great opportunity for people who are in our southeast community to have some type of job skill training. They also will be offering CPR and first aid classes at this center. It's a perfect opportunity for us to do reuse and repurpose a building, which is the old ABC Store. It's a beautiful facility, and so they have some mediation courses, conflict resolution courses, and things like that that they will be offering to the community. So if you're not aware of it, it's right across the street from The Chicken Place. Which chicken place is that?
Church's Chicken.
Church's Chicken, yes. Thank you. Yes. For the South, Your Voice Matters South District Town Hall meeting, we will have meetings on December the twelfth. That will be at Midtown Community Center at six P.M. And then on December the nineteenth, we will be at the Downing Girls Cultural Arts Center. It is the end-of-the-year celebration, so we will have some refreshments for that meeting. So please come out and join us for those two particular South District Town Hall meetings. The South Precinct Police Department will have crafts and cheers on Saturday, this Saturday, December the fourteenth, from twelve to two. So if you want to bring your children, that's free. There's another opportunity to bring your children, and you can come as well to create a craft for Christmas, and also we will have refreshments that day. Captain Barhurst is really big on the community, and he said that he will also be cooking free hot dogs and hamburgers, so please come out and join us, thirty-three oh three Jarvison Avenue, on Saturday from twelve to two. On Saturday, December the twenty-first, we will have Christmas for the children. Parents, that's also another free event for the children. The parents must accompany the children, where the children will come, six seventeen Twenty-seventh Street, from one to three P.M. It's an opportunity, we normally service between six hundred fifty to seven hundred children on that day to make sure that they have a toy for Christmas, and we have fun activities as well for that day. So I just want to let you know that there are great things happening in the city of Newport News and especially in the southeast community, but there are great things happening in our whole city. And just, I hope you all will know that we are human too. We have opportunities to get things right, but sometimes we may not make good decisions, and we have to address that as well. So just know that, that we try to make the, for me, it's doing the right thing, and so I just pray that you will hear my heart and let you know that I do hear your voice, and that does matter to me. Thank you. God bless.
Councilwoman Harris.
Yes, and good evening to everyone who came on tonight and share your thoughts with us on tonight, as always. It makes us feel good to have so many people engaged in what's going on here in our city. A couple of things. First, I wanna say happy holidays to everybody, and on Saturday, the fourteenth, at Ivy Towers, the S E L C will be having a Feeding One Thousand, so if you can have an opportunity to come on by and be supportive of the event, where they're gonna have food for the community, that's gonna be at Ivy Towers on Saturday, from twelve to three o'clock. Also had a chance to attend, school board member Marvin Harris and Dr. Parker, I wanna thank them for having their superintendent's community forum last week, which was very informative, and we had a good dialogue with Dr. Parker, sharing with us some of the initiatives and programs that are taking place right now for the students here in the city of Newport News. Also, I want to thank Mike Poploski and everyone who put together our holiday event this past Saturday. We had a good time, and the tree, we were able to light the tree, and then all the lights that accompanied that event is gonna be a great time to take your family over for free and witness that light show at City Center. I do just wanna touch briefly on everyone who was here and spoke so passionately about your rights as a gun owner. Now, I'm all for responsible gun ownership, but when you sit in my seat and you've witnessed what I've witnessed in the past ten years as a counselor at Denby High School and seeing, attending eleven funerals of young people who have been shot in the community, that touches me. That touches me. Now, I do understand your view, but this is my view, and my view is that none of those kids can buy a gun. None of those kids who have it legally purchased those guns. How they get them? Well, obviously, that's something that we need to look at to put some type of responsible gun legislation in place to... When you have had an opportunity to talk, let me talk, because what affects me, you talked about data, let me tell you about some data. I had a nephew that was shot and killed with a gun. My father's here tonight. I didn't even know he was gonna be here on tonight. His grandson, shot and killed by a gun. Ms. Uganda Sample, family member, shot and killed by a gun. And I hear you talking about being personal. How about those eleven young people that I had a chance to work with from elementary school to high school, shot and killed by a gun? So I can hear, you can hear you to talk and say things under your breath, but where's the passion when all of those kids and those families, they have to deal with them and talk with them? So...
Order, please. Order, please. You've had your chance to talk.
So I'm gonna continue to stand for the young people that I work with, for the families that I've had an opportunity to talk with and engage in conversations of how we can do more to ensure that this doesn't happen again. So I'm gonna continue to stand on that. You can walk out, it's okay, but I'm gonna continue to stand on what I was put here to do, and that's protect our young people. So if you wanna continue to talk later on, I have no issue talking with you, but that's how I stand on it. Thank you.
Side of the drinkings.
And I forgot to say, Sharon Scott, Councilwoman Sharon Scott's job fairs, Wednesday, December the fourteenth...
Job Fair is Wednesday, December the 18th, from 10:00 to 1:00 o'clock at the Denby Community Center.
Thank you. Councilman Jenkins.
First of all, I want to thank you for coming out tonight. I want to tell you how much I appreciate your understanding about the shortening of the time. Listening to the comments at one minute, I had never heard them that short, and I wish we had had more time. In light of that, please, you know, my website, my email is on the City Council page. Please email me further comments. You know, if there were things you wanted to say here tonight that you didn't get a chance to say, send them to me. I want to listen. You know, earlier this year, we celebrated the 400th anniversary of representative democracy in America. And when the first House of Burgesses sat in 1619, I am sure there were disagreements. I am sure there were debates. But people worked together to resolve issues. We have a great system of government. It is a system of government that my ancestors have fought for, like yours have, to preserve rights and to do so responsibly. I urge you tonight to trust that system of government. I urge you to contact your delegate and your senator to express your displeasure with the bills that are being introduced. You know, in any legislative session, whether it's the General Assembly or in Washington, D.C., anyone can introduce almost anything. But that doesn't necessarily mean it becomes law. Now is the time to act, to let your voice be heard, to let your concerns be addressed so that legislators can have the chance to modify or eliminate those bills that you disagree with. At this time, I do not believe, since those bills have not been passed, have not even been finalized, that we should consider making this a Second Amendment sanctuary city. One other thing I wanted to mention to you tonight. My family has been here from the start. My mother's family came to Virginia in 1616. I've had family that have fought in every battle and in every struggle that this country has gone through. But my dad's family is more recent immigrants. And my great-grandmother actually was born in Fyfeshire, Scotland. Her name was Elizabeth Ritchie. She was born in 1864 and came to this country in the 1870s as a young girl. And a tradition in my family is to pass out shortbread during the holidays. Some of you, I know, got shortbread when you came in, but I know I didn't get everyone. Please see me afterward because I would love to give you shortbread today to wish you a Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Good evening. I first would like to give my condolences to the Pugh family. One of my classmates, Paula Pugh, lost her mother, and she was our valedictorian, actually. And I just, we're praying for her and her family. Second, I just wanted, first of all, I appreciate you all coming down. And the reason that, at least, I asked for the motion to shorten the time was because when we, when we have the power to vote and do something, that's when we want a lot of input. And right now, the Attorney General has not made a decision whether or not sanctioning their cities are even legal. So, you know, I don't want to do something, you know, spend a lot of time on something that might even not be legal. The second thing is that no bills have been presented yet because they're not in session. So by the time it gets to a final bill, there are a lot of times for you to put your input in on what a bill will ultimately look like. I've heard things like, well, other cities have done this. To my knowledge, no urban city has done this yet. And also, Newport News is a leader. We're not a follower. We don't just do things because other cities do it. This is the final meeting of this year. We do not have a meeting in two weeks. The other thing I want to just reemphasize is that I want to congratulate the shipyard on its christening of the second JFK carrier. That's, that's a biggie. As has been stated, we have things that are going on throughout the city during this holiday season. We, of course, have the celebration and lights at the Newport News Park. There's two miles of, I think, over a million lights. Upcoming free events are Friday, 3:30 to 8:00 at the Brooks Crossing Art Tech Lights. We have at the Down and Grows, the Holiday Frost, also Friday from 4:00 to 8:00. And Saturday evening, again, we have at City Center Fountain Side Festival. And every half hour, there is a light show that goes on. And I think the entertainment will be back there again. The live singers, they were very good. So I want to wish everyone a happy holiday season and look forward to talking to you further. Vice Mayor Vick.
Yes, I want to thank everyone for coming down tonight as well. And two, it is important to be able to hear citizens' voices, hear your concerns, and I appreciate it because I was not aware of the legislation that you all have mentioned here tonight. But I can assure you that I will be willing to meet, and maybe we can have council meetings where you have suggested have it on the agenda so we can get your four, three minutes. And so with that, I want to also, last week was a time for one of the women that they call the trailblazer in the Newport News community. Her name was Lily Knight. She was the first black sheriff deputy hired in the city of Newport News. She was 84. She worked tirelessly within our community, and she will be, well, she really will be missed. And everything she did in the community, she owned a business, took care of her family. So, and I thank Pastor Tremaine Johnson for having that, her funeralized at his church. Also, we talked about activities in the community. Friday, December the 13th, from 3, starting at 3:30, we will have a southeast celebration, Christmas celebration, holiday celebration to, for all of the kids, all of the community. So please bring your children out. There will be an ice skating rink, as well as music and prizes, and just really fun for the entire family. And we'll also have our own tree lighting in that, in that part of the city. City Center last week was, Saturday was wonderful. Kudos to our Parks and Recreation Department for everything that you did for the citizens. It wasn't as packed as Holly Dazzle, but at least it was a good crowd, and we could move around. And it was so great, like Councilwoman Cherry said, seeing Asa light the tree. So, and that's all I have, Mr. ... Happy holidays to everyone, and that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Woodburn.
Yes, thank you. I thank you each for coming down and supporting what you believe. And I want to tell you, I am in support always of our Constitution. We are very fortunate. And once you start messing with something like that, it can grow into something else. And I appreciate the civics lessons because I don't think civics are taught in school anymore. Thank you, John. And so I do think, and I appreciate the person who talked about the countries that became communists because their guns were taken away. That is not what I want to see happen to anybody. The bad guys will always have the guns. I'm much, I'm much more interested in people getting proper mental health counseling, proper school counselors, people who talk about conflict reservation, you know, conflict...
Resolution.
Resolution. Instead of pulling out a gun or giving anybody a fist. Thank you for coming down and letting us hear what you think. You noticed I hesitated about the one minute because I don't ever like to limit people because we're not limited. So I want to thank you again for coming and letting your voices be heard. Happy New Year. I want to wish everybody, everybody a joyous holiday spirit throughout and much abundance and good health in the new year. Thank you.
Real quick, I've mentioned the One City Job Fair on the 18th, Wednesday, the 18th. On tomorrow, there's a resume workshop from 5:00 to 7:00 at the Denby Community Center to prepare you for the job fair next Wednesday. So if you know anybody, please share that news. And that's the One City Holiday Drive by Councilwoman Scott.
Did you?
Yes, Councilwoman Scott, even though she's not here, she's sending us messages. So I need to make sure that I also read her message. She said, "Please announce events and ask the citizens to clean out your cabinets and bring your non-perishables to the Denby Community Center from today until December the 23rd at 1:00 p.m." Thank you to all businesses, Work Link, V E C, Parks and Rec, and City of Newport News for their partnership and support. A special shout-out to the One City Celebration Food Drive Committee for moving the event forward even in her absence and to convey to all citizens from Sharon Scott, Merry Christmas and a happy, safe New Year. God bless.
Thank you. There are no further comments. May what you say and do uplift the city of Newport News. We stand adjourned. Thank you.